We'll call a meeting to order. We're short two members tonight. But we, and we had a hearing scheduled earlier at 6:05 on the permit on 1410 Bedford Street, and we will not be discussing that tonight. But I would need a motion to continue the hearing from 6:05 tonight to what time on?
We can do it 6:05?
6:05 on?
October 5th.
October 5th. So that'll be, so motion made, seconded?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. And no minutes, right?
No.
Formes? No formes. Correspondents?
I have general correspondence, I'll pass them along to the board. Other than that, everything is pertinent or something on the agenda.
Okay, and then?
Oh, I'm sorry, except for the crab tree cut through. I don't know if you want to do that now or you want to do that later.
Let's hold it for a moment. On the zoning board of appeals, are there any questions on those hearings?
Nope. Awful lot of in-laws all of a sudden.
Please?
Lot of in-law complications.
Yes, I know it. I know it. You all set with that, Jeff, too?
I think I, I don't know what happened, but the one thing, I was looking at one on Barry Road, and I noticed that in the description, it doesn't tell you what in the world, it doesn't tell you what they were getting, what they're variance for, I mean, what they want to refund.
If I remember correctly, I actually covered this meeting financially. She had some surgery. And they are trying to put on a garage.
Oh.
And it was continued from March to September. But I believe that's what he's trying to get a variance for. What is it, setback?
Eleven, eleven-foot setback relief, yeah.
Yeah, I believe it's a garage.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, I don't have any, you know, on the agenda now.
Stormwater revolving fund, I know we have the, in the 10 railroad, railroad avenue building, the, there's a letter here from the chief. Hiya, chief. Did you get, did you get a copy of it?
I just gave that to you guys tonight. He started on the agenda.
Yeah.
And was thoughtful enough to share. Give the board an update.
Oh, we're still reviewing 10 Barry Road?
No, Rick Collins asked that I put it on the agenda, and I asked the town manager for an update, and he didn't want to have one, but the fire chief provided them.
This is, it's like, it sounds like they're doing the work, but we haven't even approved the plan.
No, the plan's been approved.
We did, we did that?
Yeah, Rick wanted to know what's going on up there, and that's, I mean, basically, it's out of our hands, but he wanted to have it on the agenda, so I let him put it on the agenda.
All right.
That is interesting. As far as the stormwater revolving fund, we've had some discussions on that in the past. I'm sure there again, it'd be good to have all the members here when we discuss it, but that's on the, on the detention basins, that we really need to have some kind of a program where the town, when a developer builds a subdivision and leaves a detention area, who's to maintain the detention area? Quite often, the detention area is on somebody's property that's in the subdivision, and basically, the town hasn't got the money to keep it clear. Starts building up, growing up, and everybody has problems. So it was a suggestion that was made that we have some kind of a bond from the person that wants to put a detention area in, that sets aside a sum of money, so that that money can be invested somewhere, so that the income off that investment pays for the maintenance of that detention area. So that's where we're at with this. It certainly won't be on this town meetings.
Do we do anything like that now?
No.
So we don't, we don't do any kind of investing for that type of thing?
No, and the problem with it is, some, some things work very well, and other areas it doesn't. Sometimes it just, it can eventually grow up into trees and everything else, and it also creates another problem. You have some neighbors who will actually mow it, and are actually able to use it. And then there are other places that, you know, cat and night tail start growing up, and then the trees start growing up, and then you've got a forest, and then you really haven't got a detention area that was originally what it was planned to be.
Yeah, there is, there definitely isn't any clear direction of who is required to maintain it, other than allowing you access to go on to retain it, but no, like you said, never put any money aside.
They have access to get on it, but they haven't got the money to do it. And the other problem is, is when you start having wetlands, you're really not supposed to go in and do anything to them. It's sort of a catch-22. Yeah, I think there's something out there, though, that they can maintain, the detention basins.
The town's house's advice at this point is, in order to do that, to set up a fund like that, you need to create it through a town, like an article at a town meeting.
It's a huge can of worms.
You guys need to be six feet apart from people that are already here. That's three squares. Thank you.
Are there any vouchers this time?
Yep.
They went, okay.
Do you have the vouchers?
Jeff does, with the blue. The blue. Thank you.
It was interesting to get denied that on the 10th street.
Get denied.
Get denied any parents for their interest.
And thank you, rumor has it, that they can come back, the road and submit a subdivision plan.
I don't know why, never mind, I'll keep my comments to myself.
Just to give you guys an update, too, at the October meeting, there's a special town meeting, October 19th. I hope I have that date right. It'll be a Monday. I think I gave you the Monday, the 16th.
And what's the deal with that, 19th?
The 19th, should be a Monday night.
Yeah. What's the deal with attendance?
It's going to be the same, the exact same as we did.
Town meeting, huh?
In June. So I don't, I'm not sure there's a quorum per se, but there can be 72 people in the auditorium. But I did put the proposed zoning changes that we left off because of time constraints in June, those submissions, you guys will have a public hearing, we'll have to move on that. And the stormwater management regulations, that the collaborative worked on with the consultant, which all happened, the end of last year, the start of this year, but they had a final product well in advance of COVID, and if that was going to happen at this meeting, so I put that on as well. Any or all can go forward or be held, that'll be up to you guys. I just thought it better to get them on to see if you wanted to be there.
Was there any reason for us to hold back until spring? I mean, other than the fact that none of us understand it?
Nothing at all. I mean, they were ready to go in April or May, whenever our regular town meeting would have been. And in June, they consolidated everything, those money articles, because of COVID, we weren't supposed to be together that long, so they wanted to make it as quick as possible. But now we don't have that whole warrant. Some other stuff.
Wasn't any of this earth-shaking, is there, in the zoning?
No, no, that's just words.
I know, yes. I hate to keep you all out here waiting, but I can't stop the hearing until 6:30, which is published, so I.
Is that what you're here for? I saw the presentation boards. Are you here for 662 Adams Street? Oh, okay. Do we need to put, regarding the emergency access on crab tree, do we need to put that on the agenda to talk about it?
You can make a motion to do that. With something that, it was correspondence that came in?
Yes, yeah.
So I want the board to be aware of it. Really can't be discussed tonight because it's not on the agenda, but we could have that on the October meeting, if that's what the board wants to do.
Well, if we can all vote them, but I mean, I would like to see that on there. Yeah. So we'll, we'll put that on the October 5th, is it? Liz, October 5th is our next meeting. Did you, are we having a meeting on the special town meeting, too?
No, so October, we're having a meeting September 30th, on Zero Summer Street.
Oh, I'm not serious.
And then we're having a meeting for October 5th. Welcome to my world, October 5th. Regular, your regularly scheduled board meeting. And at that meeting, we'll do 1410 Bedford Street, which got postponed tonight. We're also going to do the zoning articles, and the separate town meeting, and then town meeting is October 19th.
Where is the 30th meeting? Here, or?
At the senior center.
Senior center? And then October 5th, you said, right?
October 5th will be here. Yep, September 30th will be at the senior center, and then October 19th will be at Icefall Auditorium.
That's town meeting, the 19th?
That's town meeting, special town meeting.
But we're not, we're not having a meeting before?
No, we can't. We can't. There was no one in the classrooms. Actually, that's my assumption, that it's the same as June.
Fine by me.
What, I was waiting to see if, maybe I missed it. Was there, was there more discussion on the lawyers that sent our lawyer? Discussion about when to have the meeting for the summer street, for Zero Summer Street?
One second. If you guys want to grab a chair, you can move them over here. You've got to be 6, 400, 900. I may have a feet of height, you want, it's three blocks. At the end of the day, it's three blocks. Their attorney sent our attorney a letter.
Yeah.
And she did not respond to him. She sent it back to me.
That, that was it?
He never responded, he never, sent me an email, so I didn't respond.
Oh, okay.
But I needed you guys to know.
Yeah, I guess I would have sent it if I was them, too. No, they just, they just want.
Give it a shot, right?
Yeah, give it a shot.
And that choice is always up to you, if you guys want to do the meeting in person or you want to do it in person.
Rather do it in person.
Jeff, before you got here, we were talking about if there's any additional information you think you need on 1410 Bedford Street. They've provided a report, which I gave you a copy of.
Yes, ma'am.
And Wayne wants to see the curb cuts on the plan, and Bob wants to see the extra parking.
They show us some sort of a plan?
Or at least a plan, whatever, yeah. Is there anything, I mean, do you think from the town council, or from the traffic engineer, or power engineer, any information?
No, just those same items.
Nothing for me to read except what's on here right now.
Just, yeah, and can you remind anybody who wants to speak? Can you remind anybody who wants to speak? We need to come up and speak right into that microphone, it's going to be because it's hard to hear from the masses.
Tell me that, I can't hear my members.
Right.
Being 6:30, the, on, town will hold a public hearing, and it will hold a public hearing in accordance with chapter 49 of the town general bylaws to determine whether or not Mr. and Mrs. Sullivan have, on their property, have violated said bylaw by disposing more than 250 cubic yards of fill material on the property located at 662 Adams Street, Abington, Massachusetts, without a permit from the Abington Planning Board. This notice is based on complaints and observations of large amounts of fill being brought into the property. You have sent these notices of this unlawful activity on May 21st, 2020, and July 20, 2020, but have not filed an application. In accordance with the authority, the planning board will conduct a public hearing, and based on the credible evidence and testimony presented, it may make such findings and other concerning the alleged violations of the town's bylaws, which may include issuance of an order to correct and/or the assessment of fines in the amount of $300 per day for each day unpermitted fill has remained on the property. You are invited to participate in the hearing, and at that time, you may produce any documents and/or witnesses. You may be represented by counsel at your expense if you so choose. In connection with the public hearing, you are hereby ordered to provide the following documentation to the Abington Planning Board by no later than the close of business September 2nd, 2020. Fill permit application, a lot, plan, or sketch with sufficient accuracy, scale, and detail to show the subject, properties, boundaries, and approximate location, depth, and measurements, dimensions of the proportion of the property at which the fill was placed, as well as the original and finished topography of the affected area with at least two-foot contours, a description of the type of fill, gravel, sand, loam, and so forth, and all materials contained within the fill, such as bricks, cement, or other debris, and the approximate amount of fill brought to the area. Any analytical results of testing of the fill material to ensure that it meets clean fill standards as set forth in federal, state, and local law. The source of the fill, including all bills of lading, dates that fill was delivered to the property, and all dates of work. Compaction method used and measures taken to control erosion and runoff, including a description of the final cover material. If you have any questions about the hearing, please call Abington Planning Board office. Wayne Smith, chairman. Someone here to speak on that? Yes, if you all would use the microphone here, it'd make things easier.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Ronald Whitney, and I am here to speak on behalf of Robert and Jane Sullivan. Our Robert is here with us this evening. He's this gentleman, right back behind me. And also accompanying us is Clark Brewer, who is an architect, I'm sorry?
Yes, that's Clark.
Clark Brewer, who is an architect and consulting with Mr. Sullivan, as well as Sean Hardy from Hardy Engineering, Donovan Waymouth. We come here with our hat in our hand because we understand that there should have been a permit for fill taken out, an application for that permit before your board. Mr. Sullivan did not go forward with any malice. He thought that he could do what he was doing. In fact, he removed more fill than he took and placed into the premises. Most of the work was done between April and June, and he seemingly thought that it was done with the blessing of the zoning officer and the building commissioner, insofar as the building commissioner did visit the site, as best as Mr. Sullivan can recollect, that was sometime in June. He did see the fill that was there, and he offered no objection to the fill. At the time that they visited the site, there was a permit application that had been made by Mr. Sullivan to build a fence, and so he built the fence. And that's where in the conflict arose, if you will. Prior to the time of the fence installation, the neighbor directly next door to the property had been conversing with Mr. Sullivan. And in fact, Mr. Sullivan, at the neighbor's behest, had removed some fill from the neighbor's yard next door. And they were working on the same page, it appeared. And when the fence went in, that's where the potty's potted, and that's where the conflict arose. But regardless of what happened between the neighbors, Mr. Sullivan, and his neighbor, we stand here before you to acknowledge that what Mr. Sullivan did in placing the fill was out of bounds without having applied for and received a permit from your board. Now, Mr. Hardy is here, and he's a civil engineer. He doesn't have a lot to offer tonight, because Mr. Sullivan just received your letter that stated August 24th, sometime around August 26th. He immediately called me, and I recommended, advised him that we are going to need to comply with all of the town of Abington rules and regulations, even if it's in retrospect, and even if it's after your work that you've done. And ask for forgiveness, but also assure the board that everything that was done was done appropriately, there weren't any concerns, I don't believe, about trucks doing any damage to neighboring properties, or any soil going onto neighboring properties, dust, or any other hazards that were created by the work that was done. We couldn't possibly put together all the information that the board was looking for in the past 10 days, but we have set the wheels in motion to get all of that to you. And I would ask the board to consider rescheduling this hearing some 30 or 60 days from now. We don't believe that we can put together a site plan between now and then, because as, as has been discussed with some town officials, a site plan is going to be necessary for Mr. Sullivan to go forward with his use of the property. And I don't know if you've all had a chance to go down to the property, but Mr. Sullivan is in the snow removal business, and as a consequence, he owns heavy equipment. And that heavy equipment is sitting on the site currently. He purchased the property with his wife back in September of 2019. He thought it was a great opportunity in an industrial zone to have a yard to park his equipment. I'm sure you're familiar with the site. The property right next door is a similar type of operation, where they've got a lot of equipment parked in open lot storage, which, if we look at the industrial zone and the allowed uses in the industrial zone under section 17521 of zoning bylaws, it appears that it is an allowed use, albeit it requires a special permit, and in this case, it required a permit for fill. Essentially, what Mr. Sullivan did was he flattened out the lot. He took a lot of gravel out, and he would tell you, and would be willing to speak to the board tonight, he would tell you that he took a great deal of fill out, and what he replaced it with was a thin coat approximately two to three inches, four inches perhaps, thick of what's called processed gravel, which is kind of like a ground-up pavement that you, you know, they take off the streets when they plane them. And so we are on it. I can. I can assure you that we will get back to you with all of the information that you're looking for, but on approximately 10 days' notice, we just couldn't put anything together. Mr. Sullivan, have I left something out that you would like to address with the board? And so, I'm just asking the board if they would indulge us to, for a 30-day extension of this hearing so that we can provide the board with a full gamut of how many yards, how many tons actually were all the bills of lading, and an analysis of the type of material that was in fact placed on the property. And we anticipate that we would be able to come back within 30 days with all of that in addition. I think that Mr. Hardy would have a good working plan, site plan at that time. It might not be the final, but working site plan, which we are yet to apply for. I did bring down, with the courtesies of Ms. Shea, I brought down and filed the fill permit, albeit it's just a one-page form, not backed up by any of the required documentation. But I felt that at the very least, we should have all of us here, Mr. Sullivan, Hardy, and Mr. Brewer, to let the board know that we're going forward in good faith to provide the board what you need to make a decision on this.
I appreciate the fact that you are here representing Mr. Sullivan, but I would like to let you know that we sent a letter on May 21st, we sent a letter on June 17th, we sent a letter on July 17th. And I also spoke with Mr. Sullivan on the phone after he called your office at one point, and that was sometime around July 18th. I talked with him on the telephone, and he said he was going to get the plans to us, and he'd get it into us in a few days. So what you may have been told is not exactly right, but we certainly can continue the hearing. I do want to hear from the residents that are here that came in tonight, and we'll go over that, and then we'll take a vote from there.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was not aware of those early letters. I was not aware of the early letters.
I know you weren't because you would have told me what you were aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wants to speak? Yes, sir. Please take the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
Well, my name is Patrick Kearney, and I live at 652 Adams Street, right next door to Mr. Sullivan, on the neighbor to which Mr. Whitney alluded. Mr. Sullivan moved in and promptly, you know, started to set up his business, and he cleared all the trees, and he cleared the lot. And as he was starting to excavate the material that Mr. Whitney claims he excavated more than he filled, one of the first questions I asked him, because you need a permit to remove fill in Abington as well, "Do you have a permit for this work?" His words to me were, "Anything I need a permit for, I'll get a permit." So he promptly removed all the fill, and he let it sit like that for a while, and then he did come to me, and he said, "Listen, there was a big hill that spanned both our yards." And he said, "In lieu of putting a retaining wall, I'm going to remove, I can remove the fill on your side." And he offered to do that, and I said, "Okay, but what we want is, we want it graded a certain way, we want, you know, we want the yard, we don't want the water spilling back into our house." He did the work, and then the day came that he went to do the fill, and it didn't look graded anywhere close to where it should be graded, so I expressed my concerns to Mr. Sullivan. That's the point at which the relationship broke down because, at that point, he was going ahead with his plan no matter what I said or did. So he started to fill his yard on April 16th, at which time I expressed fill. At the time he did, there was a low point that comes to my yard, and he wasn't sure what he was going to do. He had no engineers involved, no planning whatsoever, so he dug a four-foot by four-foot trench along my fence. And I have, I have video and photographic evidence that I can show the board to prove anything that I'm saying. He dug a four-foot trench along my fence and proceeded to fill that with the tailings or whatever the material was. So basically, what he has created is an aquifer against my property line that whatever drains in his yard is going to build up there and push into my property. I've got plenty of photos that can show you. It's not two to three inches of fill, it's 18 to 24 inches of fill across the entire property. Because when he first did it, CMC paving did not want to encroach on the corner. Our yards are kind of like two Ls interlocked, so where the corner of my yard is, they didn't want to encroach because they knew it was a drainage nightmare. So they curved it, and they stayed away, and they left it like that for a while until he decided to put up his fence. Now, he claimed that my fence was on his property. I asked him to give me time to get a surveyor out there because I had put my fence up according to what Carl Garvey had told me, you know, he gave me a point and I went off that, so I wanted to get him back out. Before I could get the surveyor back out, Mr. Sullivan proceeded to put up his fence. I asked him if he had a permit. He did not have a permit in hand when he put up his fence. He fraudulently filled out the permit application because he said that he was doing it himself so he didn't have to fill out the homeowner's contract, the contract of registration, the liability insurance, the workers' comp. Once again, video and photo evidence that he had a company put his fence up. So then, he filed the permit afterwards, he put up the fence. The fence on my side of the yard is two feet off the ground, so the fence, he added on to the posts, he put the fence up, the fence is two feet off the ground, and then he filled that with jagged cement blocks. And then he proceeded to fill in the rest of the land afterwards. So basically, my timeline is, he started to fill on 4/16. I filed a zoning complaint on May 18th. He put the fence up and more fill on May 25th. He was visited from the town and told that he was in violation on June 1st. He had the fill company come back and put more fill in on June 6th. And on July 3rd, I filed a formal complaint to the Board of Selectmen, upon which I was led to believe that they were supposed to have conducted an investigation, which I've not been, I've been contacted by the town manager that, you know, this is... I also, I'm sorry, I received a letter from the Planning Board on July 10th stating that this was not a Planning Board issue, it was a zoning board issue. But here we are having a hearing, so obviously something has changed. But my complaint to the Board of Selectmen has not been answered by the Board of Selectmen, there's not been an investigation, nobody's contacted me, nobody's asked me for any of the photos, any of the videos, any of the evidence of what has happened here. But I can guarantee you, there's a four-foot trench filled with his leaching fill against my property, and his fill is at least 18 to 24 inches deep. And I think that's about all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Frank Murphy. I reside at 105 Oak Street in Abington. I also have photographic evidence of the fill process. There appear to me to be no signs of surveyor stakes, no accounting for the wetlands that have bought the property. It looks to me as though he filled that with his fill indiscriminately. From all appearances, it seems as though it's an act of willful negligence and apologized later, but that's up to you to decide. The fill is at least two feet deep in most areas of unknown origin. The vehicles that are stored there look to us as though they are far more than just his own personal property, and there are no mitigation procedures or methods for any oil leaks, drains, whatever. So he's impacted wetlands, he's impacted a budding property. It looks as though he's filled and cleared a budding properties from my looking at certified plot plan of adjacent property. So that's the issues that I see in front of me. It's a cursory examination. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anybody else want to speak? You'll be able to come back.
My name is Jean Kemp. I'm a southerly abutter of this gentleman's mess. I can vouch for the fact that he put in fill of stumps, rocks, and concrete blocks and debris, because I watched him do it. I couldn't take pictures because I cannot get down there due to the weeds and whatnot. Right now, he has probably 10 tractor-trailer units, 52 footers out there with all kinds of stuff on them, and two of them are on my land, as well as a bunch of junk lawn mowers and a refrigerator that's not secured. So I'm not in a very good state of mind. He's destroyed my property value. He's tried to drive me out of my house, and he's made a general mess out of my property. Plus the fact, when he put his fence up, he took away about 20 feet of my property that I've maintained through eminent domain for 30 years. So I don't feel it's right. I would like a survey at his expense.
Fine, thank you.
112 Oak Street.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak?
One more thing I did forget to mention is, Mr. Sullivan has been operating his business almost every day since all of this has begun. Now, I was informed by the zoning board of, the zoning enforcement officer that technically, until he files a change of use plan, files the site plan, gets that all approved, which he also owes 20-foot buffer strips, 10 feet of landscape strip across his driveway with, plus a 24 driveway which he can't accommodate. He needs 90-foot frontage to be in industrial zone, which he's only got 76. All these problems, he's in such violation, why is he allowed, and I said this in my complaint to the Board of Selectmen, why is he allowed to conduct his business? Why is there not a cease and desist on his business? Why is he allowed without permits or a certificate of occupancy to occupy the premises?
Have you seen these?
Sorry?
Have you seen these?
You know, we filed for the street file, and none of this was in it.
No, they're sending them out now. I get a copy of them for our file. They're sending him cease and desist letters and asking him to file a site plan.
Okay.
It sounds like you're not aware that they're doing that.
No, because I'll tell you honestly, I'll...
You can go back down, and they'll be happy to show you what they've done.
You know, I've been a resident of Abington for 30 years, you know, more or less, and I've rented in this town. I bought my house, I've coached sports, my kids have come through the school system. I've lived in this town for 30 years. I've never had a problem with any other neighbor, ever. And this guy just kicks his way into our town and just goes with a cavalier attitude of, "It's an industrial zone, I can do whatever I want." Well, he can have his lawyer appear at the Planning Board hearing, he should have consulted his lawyer before he invested all this money in his business and done his due diligence and find out what he could have done and what he couldn't have done. Because I'm just an elevator mechanic, and I can read the town bylaws and realize what I can and what I can't do. But guys like this, they come into the town and they get themselves entrenched figuring the town hasn't got the teeth to dig me out of this and make me reverse this. You know, I've already invested this money, I've spent it, I'm here, I'm doing my business. You know, it's, the guy has completely destroyed my peaceful enjoyment of my house. I live next door to him, I have to experience this almost every single day, listening to the fork trucks and the diesel trucks and the plows slamming, and, you know, my grandchildren, I have a play yard right up against the fence that I built three years ago before he bought this house. Now, all of a sudden, they're terrified to play in the play yard because they can hear all the trucks and everything banging around on the other side of the fence. It's, yeah, early in the morning, late at night. Well, you know, Mr. Sullivan usually, I know he works full-time, and he usually comes here in the afternoon, he'll spend the afternoon until about 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock working and stuff like that, and then Saturdays and Sundays when it's my day off. I'm listening to this, I'm smelling the diesel fumes, the dust is getting kicked up, and there's nothing but a fence, two feet off the ground with a bunch of blocks and this fill, and the fill, you know, I can show you pictures of all the oil stains on the fill. Where's that leaching to? Is that leaching into my yard where my grandkids are playing and I plant my garden? You know, I don't, I don't think we should have to deal with this. It's just not right. It's just not right, the way he's coming here and just with his cavalier attitude. And like I said, I've lived in Abington a long time, I love this town. You know, my, this town's been great to us, it really has. One of the best experiences of my life was my daughter being one of the first of many teams to win a state championship in soccer. And we've come through, and, you know, this is just such an interference on our life that I hope that maybe we can do something about this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There has been a letter from the zoning enforcement officer asking for quite a bit, and if you need this, Mr. Whitney, you can have some of these copies, but this has been an ongoing problem since early spring, and it's not something that just happened, and there's been a lot of correspondence and so forth, but very little response. Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to apologize to the board, to the extent that I didn't know a lot of these things that have come forward, I couldn't relate them to the board. All that I saw prior to coming here is the letter ordering Mr. Sullivan to come before the board tonight that was dated August 24th, so my apologies. It sounds to me like we have a lot of work to do.
You do.
A lot of work in healing some of the difficulties that have been engendered by what's gone on over the past four or five months. And I can tell the board from my perspective and advising my client that the advice that I offer him will be to step up to the plate and to do anything and everything that's necessary to ameliorate the concerns of the neighbors and the concerns of the town fathers in trying to get things back to a more appropriate place. And so, I would again just offer to the board that Mr. Sullivan has engaged the services of Hardy Engineering and Mr. Clark Brewer, as well as myself, to try to right the wrongs that have occurred over the past number of months. So with that in mind, I would again renew my request for a continuance of the hearing to perhaps your next hearing in October, at which time we could present a site plan and all the documentation that you asked for relative to the materials, the loads, the total yodage, tonnage, if you will, and everything else that's required of a fill permit.
Thank you. The board members have anything they want to say?
Ms. Debbie Lowens, I live at 105 Oak Street. My property looks out my window. I have beautiful trees over that, so my, there's a road, and then there was trees. So all the companies that have been in here before, we had these beautiful trees, it was a buffer zone between the business, and it was wonderful. He came in and he sawed all those trees down. I sent letters, they said they're his trees, he can cut them down. So he cut all those trees down, and then he put up a stockade fence along the, so you can just look right over the stockade fence and see everything that's going on, you hear everything, you smell diesel, you wake up at 4:00 in the morning to all this. This is a residential area that I'm in, but now it's impacted everything. The property values have all gone down. It's not anything that should have been, you know, but I can't tell somebody not to cut their trees down. I asked nicely, it didn't matter. So, I don't know.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
105 Oak Street. In light of all the notifications this gentleman has received, visits from the town, visits from neighbors, he hasn't proven himself to be a good neighbor yet. What makes you think he's going to start now? Thank you.
Just in response to Mr. Whitney's plea for more time, I would like the board to consider that Mr. Sullivan has been granted ample time by the Board of Selectmen, the zoning board, and everybody involved, the building inspector and everybody. He's had ample time to get all this together since June 1st, all right? And he assured all those people that he was working with an engineer to get this all worked out months ago. So for him to need more time, I think is just a stall tactic. So please consider, thank you.
I understand. He told me the same thing. I understand, he told me the same thing. Any other comments from the board? Or any other comments from the public? And this hearing will be continued, so I presume, so you'll be able to speak at the next meeting also. Board members?
I'd just like to say that this is not going to be a design while at the meeting process. So, when you come in, you need to address not what you call, what's out there now is not what I call the existing grade. I'm talking about the existing grade before the fill is brought in. I'd like to know where the water was running, how it was running naturally, and how you propose to respond to that water, either not making it worse, but either way, it's going to be very important to know how that water's leaving and as well as other things that are obvious, the quality of fill. But I just want to make, you know, we're going to be looking very closely at how the water drains, and also procedures for bringing that kind of fill in and packing it down, all right? So, just don't want it to be something, you come in, that meeting, you take our response, leave to go change it, and it's not going to be one of those processes.
So, Sean Hardy with Hardy and Mann Design Group. I have been retained by the owner. So, that's part of, I'm trying to listen and that's, I certainly want to present what you guys need, so. To know what the pre-existing condition was is going to be some, an interesting, it's hard to forensically get a topography, but I think we might be able to do something with some of the state records, but, so you want to know, if what I'm hearing, you're saying what the condition is today isn't necessarily what we're presenting. You want a final solution that says, "We're going to grade water that's not to the neighbors," or, and I'm, forgive me if I'm putting words in your mouth, but I think that's what you said, so.
That, I mean, dead minimumally, but you have to address the buffers and all those sections.
Okay.
I would make a suggestion, you kind of, you're filing a site plan, plus you're doing the fill, it needs to be together.
Yeah.
To have some sort of a design and not just come in for the fill permit and then come in for the site plan. It's two of the same at this point.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's going to involve the town, the town engineers obviously too, as soon as you do the site plan.
Okay. One thing I'd mention is that I would be, I understand about whether, that they haven't shown good faith up to this point, and I think, actually, the line has been drawn that if next month they're not here for, with the answers, then it's a no-brainer as to what has to be done with it. But, but I also can't believe that, give him a chance to do it right, whether he wants to do it right or not, and submit, actually, to correct whatever's happening right now would be the one way that I'd advise that we do it in the meeting to correct the issues along the borders of the property, especially the drainage and that fill that they use for the trench around the, so, to be able to address that, we need to be able to have it presented in front of us, something that everyone signs on to, and then, of course, it doesn't mean a damn if we don't enforce it, but there'll be a lot of, there'll be a supervision to it of our engineers as well. So, I guess I'm just saying that I've given the opportunity to, that's what I had, given the opportunity to do it correctly, and let's see if we can correct all the issues that you've got now against your property. We'll see if we can reference, you guys should consider also how much greenery you've removed from around the neighbors' yards. That goes a long way to restoring some of that.
If I'm not mistaken, we have town council and there's a cease and desist from the planning board and now from the building department.
Yeah.
We've got town council involved, correct?
Yeah, yes. Yes, sir, yes.
Thanks. Pat Kearney, 652 Adams, once again, sorry. But, so, I just hope that his pre-existing plan includes what my photographs are back up as far as the trenching and where the grading was and things like that. And my issue is that Mr. Sullivan does not have anywhere close to the dimensions in his property to allow what he's required by the zoning bylaws to abut a residence. He owes me a twenty-foot buffer strip with two rows of trees, and his driveway owes me a ten-foot landscape strip, and he also has to have a twenty-four-foot driveway, he does not have thirty-four feet between my fence and his house. So, whatever he does is going to have to be by special permit or, whatever the process is, but he does not possess the dimensions to do with his land what he wants to do. Not even close.
He's going to have to come forward to our site plan, he's going to have to file a site plan, he needs to conform to the rules of regulations.
And the site plan will have to conform to the zoning bylaws? And if it doesn't?
He asks for variance from, you know, yes, that's part of the site plan is, he's going to conform to all rules and regulations.
And if he had to have a variance, it would be from whom?
The zoning board.
Me?
The zoning board of appeals.
The variance?
The zoning board of appeals, if he needed a variance for something.
Okay, thank you.
It's a non, if it's a non-conforming law, I'm assuming, just only by what you're saying, if it is that one, then I'm not sure what triggers it other than when you're physically trying to move the building. But if anything that...
He didn't have the furniture.
Well, if he didn't have the furniture to begin with and his property's staying the same, other than he's working the grounds around it, I don't think that would trigger it. But if anything that they feel, when they go through the zoning review, they're going to have to put that aside as to, because we won't be able to sign off on anything until we know that zoning relief has been given, if they need it. But there is a, I'm not exactly sure what the wording is, but I think that the triggering that usually makes grandfather clause go away is when you start moving buildings or expanding buildings. It's more of an issue with, for non-conforming laws.
Okay, meaning that the industrial grandfather clause would not be allowed, is that the zoning?
Meaning that...
The zoning is the zoning.
Yeah.
The zoning is the zoning, so that didn't go away.
Even though it's always been used as residential, it's a non-conforming use?
It's still, it's still an industrial zone. To change his use, depending upon what he's got, he may need a variance, until we actually see what's going on there.
That's what he'll also discover.
It's still, it's still industrial zones, you can't change the zoning.
No, what do you need permission?
What was there before?
It's always been used as residential.
It's always been a house since it was built.
Next door, it's always been...
Yeah, you look on Zillow, you see.
Right. Next door has always been the McGill and whatever it is, the...
Well, it was Johnson's.
Johnson's, that's it, yes. But that particular piece of property was just a house?
Just a house, just a residence.
That's why the building inspector is asking for the site plan. I mean, that involves surveying and topos and so...
Jean Camp, 112 Oak. If anyone wants to see what he did to destroy the trees, I have photos of the entire area that was like for fifty years before he got there.
If you'd like, not tonight, but if you'd like to submit those, you can copy them...
I can submit them right now, I have copies.
Well, if you have copies, but give it to our secretary and...
She's got to keep them though, if you give them to her and show them to us, she needs to keep them.
If you want to bring them to the next meeting, that might be better, make copies of them and then you can leave them.
I have copies, but I could make several more.
Okay, Mrs. Camp.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion to continue the hearing to October 5th.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, seconded.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
Quick discussion. Honestly, I don't think a month is enough time for that. They have the cease and desist.
The problem, Bob...
I'm not going to speak for the engineer, I guess, as I've just thrown out there for discussion.
Yeah, as you're saying that, I'm getting a little nervous because I, to do it and do it right...
Right. At least, I at least like to see a report of where you're at in a month's time.
That's fine. Yeah, I was just concerned with this...
Because I don't think you're going to have the time to get a full-blown site plan.
I was just concerned with this member saying, "Don't come in peace."
You need to give us money for the engineering.
I'm sorry, in terms, first of all, I apologize if I'm late. Liz, if you clarify as to why the month is not going to work in terms of getting a final plan for review, to see if people understand how it works.
You would need to have it to me, too.
Yeah, and I, I mean...
You don't have it tonight.
I've just been retained, there has been a survey, but it doesn't have topography on it. I have to like, kind of figure out what was there and then overlay that with what is there. I probably would like to reach out to some of the neighbors and see if they, you know, are willing to share some of those photos with me and maybe piece together what's what and present something to you. I'm happy to, I mean, come back in a month and say here's my progress, but to say that's all going to be put together in a month is a tall task, especially when a month means two weeks.
I wouldn't expect that to be...
It's going to peer review, is that, sorry, didn't...
Yes.
Who was that going to, if you...
You guys get to pick.
Okay, so we have to, so when does that pick happen?
When you submit the plan.
Okay, all right, I'm just trying.
There's a filing schedule on the website, so if they're now looking at November, then I would need it, it's like, probably the first week of October.
Yeah.
Depending on my...
I mean, the thing, one of the things I can't control is the survey, so we have four or five companies that we use, and I, you know, and I'm happy to see who's available the fastest and get them what I need to get, but...
Primarily, I don't see any reason why to give you an extension beyond that time. If in a month's time you come in, there's no progress has been made, then it's a no-brainer, there's no sense going any further, you're not going to entertain it.
There will be progress made, I...
That's kind of why I made the comment, I fully expect you not be able to do that in a short period of time.
And I thank you for appreciating that.
We would like to see some of the progress and not a bad idea to talk to some of the neighbors, you can see they're a little upset.
Yep, I get it, and, you know, and when I hear that somebody says, "I want you to have it," and look at like the picture that I have, then I would like to see that picture to know.
We get that, that takes time.
Yep, thank you.
And the only, and I, the only problem I have with it, I feel for the neighbors in the fact that this has been going on forever, there's been correspondence going back forever, and all of a sudden, we've finally got to a point where something's going to happen, and I realize, I hate to keep putting it off, but I know exactly what Bob and Jeff said, that...
Well, I can tell you that I've been retained, I have a proposal, I've been retained, I'm on the job, so...
Yeah.
I think it was a week and a half ago, or a week, yeah, a little, like about a week ago, I don't know the exact date, but I've walked the site. You know, I got, I'm glad to hear what the neighbors had to say, and I think I know what you, direction you guys want, and I appreciate that you understand that's not a two-week scenario, but I also appreciate that you want to see something that's being done, so.
Yep.
Okay?
We need to, we need to make it clear that nothing can come in and go out of that property. No more fill can be taken out, no more fill can be brought in. In other words, it's a cease and desist. The building department has already had a cease and desist order against them, so obviously, that's a lot of the problem. It's gone on far too long, and perhaps the thing is to continue the hearing, which I hate to do instead of October, to make it November, which would be November 2nd. I personally would like to see their progress on the 5th, I hate to do it that way.
At the next meeting?
To make sure they're going forward.
I have an email from the town manager, Scott Lambesi, dated July 23rd, that assured me that Mr. Sullivan then was working with an engineer to develop a site plan. That's way more than a week and a half ago.
I understand that, and the thing, the thing that I, I want something done, and obviously, we can point fingers, and I know where to point the fingers to, but we want to get this thing solved. By doing nothing, by not getting a new site plan and getting something done properly, we're probably shooting ourselves in the foot, which I don't want to do. I want to get the problem solved. Presently, it's unacceptable, there's no question about that.
Absolutely, absolutely, it's unacceptable. And it said in the letter that, you know, the board retains its ability to fine him $300 a day since the fill's been in in April, and have him remove the fill, which I would like to see him remove the fill because he has created an aquifer against my property. You know, sir, what's your name?
Rick Collins.
Rick Collins? Okay, thank you. No name tag. But, yeah, I just, like you say, I've been living this every day, he's right next door to me. I've got grandchildren, family that visit, they come over, they play in the pool, we have a great time. I live in my backyard, my backyard's the best room in my house. You know, I always say that. And it's been the worst summer because all I'm doing is smelling diesel fumes, sucking dust, listening to fork trucks. My grandchildren are frightened of the slamming noises on the other side of the fence and all the work that's going on, and I just think, I think the town's given Mr. Sullivan enough time. And I really don't think we need to give him any more. He's been kicking a can down the road, trying to entrench himself and just waiting for the process to take place, and all the while, now the cease and desist that you showed me, that's a cease and desist on his business, he can no longer conduct his business?
The cease and desist that I have received copies of are from the inspectional services department, and they are fining him. This is a seventh violation because he has not filed a site plan in here, and the ticket is $300.
Right, so...
And it's not the first one he's received, but they're filing it because he hasn't filed a site plan. And that will continue to happen until he files a site plan.
So, so is he allowed to occupy the premises and work on the premises and conduct his business?
That's up to the inspectional services department, but they just passed a chairman note that said, "If you guys see removing or bringing in fill, please contact me and I'll send some."
Well, that's, that's not the issue right now. The issue is him conducting his business and disrupting my peaceful enjoyment of my backyard.
That's up to the inspectional services.
Without any buffer zones, buffer strips, any kind of landscape and any kind of buffer between him and I. And I was, now, see, according to the town bylaws, 175-80, if I file a written complaint to the Board of Selectmen, which I've done twice already, the Board of Selectmen is supposed to investigate it, and if they believe, and if they even believe that he's going to do something wrong, they can issue a cease and desist order on his business. And that's not been done, and that's what bothers me, is the town is dragging their feet, and meanwhile, he's just getting deeper and deeper and deeper into what he's doing.
I would suggest contacting the town manager about that again. This morning, I think they're doing what they can do.
We can't speak to the Selectmen, obviously, you need to follow up on that.
I understand, so all you guys can do is basically...
I understand your frustration, but the only way to fix this and fix it right is allow him to, an engineer to design it, whether it means taking fill out, unfortunately, to do it right, we need to know what we're talking about.
Okay, so...
You can't just go willy-nilly in there and start...
Well, I understand, I understand, but...
Pulling it out, even though he did that.
I understand, sir, but he's been granted more than ample time.
Yeah, I understand.
And the only time he contacted his lawyer is when he finally got in trouble and he has to go in front of a board.
Well, at that, you see the point we're at, so...
I hope you take that into consideration.
That's why I asked, I asked for his progress on the October, because we're not going to let it go on for six months.
I would much appreciate that, thank you.
Are you going to give him a date?
October 5th.
They need to, they will be back here... I'm not going to be ready by October 5th on a proper site plan, but I want to see some progress, you heard, you heard me say that.
Yes, but, I mean, they...
So, if we just, if we just deny this right now, where are you guys going to be left?
No, I understand.
You know what I mean?
But...
My feeling is that the designer's going to be either falsified or inadequate, like his billing permit for his fence.
We're going to have our own engineers look at the same, that's part of the site plan.
And your engineers are welcome to come to my house and look at his fence and look at my photos of the property. It'll give you a very good idea of where the grade was before he changed it.
I have two questions.
Yes.
Again, I apologize to the board and to everybody here for being late. This was on our agenda for August, wasn't it? Was it pulled up? I thought it was on our August agenda.
No, I put it on the agenda to give you an update of the complaints of the cease and desist. That town council was involved, and the town council drafted the hearing notice for tonight.
Okay, all right, fine. And maybe this is a better question for the board, for the attorney, what business is going on on that site? Because I've tried to go by it and I can't tell.
That's fine.
Our, our visit to the property today for the first time.
And I apologize for being late, probably missing this part.
No problem, no problem, we all have lives to lead. We appreciate you, giving you time to serve on these boards. So, I can only tell you what my observations were today, and they're the same as yours, no doubt. There are trucks parked there, there's no removal equipment. I think, Mr. Sullivan, have you been doing some repairs on... I think, Mr. Sullivan, have you been doing some repairs on various equipment on the site?
We do the maintenance, we can, some electrical, maybe some chemical, but nothing, nothing of the major sort, I guess, without, if the Zillian brings it. The business, the equipment is, let's say leased or rented to Mass DOT. It summers in Abington, it winters in another town on state property. So, come December 1, it'll be driven out of here. It's parked on state property, it's empty. Other than that, the equipment hasn't been moved. I think some of the neighbors' concerns were deep. I have a log, I've been keeping it since July, exactly what work was done on what day, whether the vehicle was started, whether it was electrical or nature. So, I think some of the concerns that these people have, travels, parking on property. That's the neighbors, that's the other industrial property, because as Pat had mentioned, our, my property interlocks with Pat's. There's another property that interlocks with both of ours, and that's behind me. And this lady, I believe, from Oak Street, 112 Oak, I think it was, I think her concern is with my other neighbor on the other side. She's talking about fill that had been brought into that property with concrete and debris, et cetera. Nothing of that sort was brought into my property. So, her photographs and her concerns are another property, not mine. The people here from 105 Oak Street, I'm not sure whether you're talking about me or whether you're talking about the property that's just behind that immediate fence that's right there in front of you. That's the neighbor, that's not me. I'm on the other side of this property. I actually am on Adam Street. I don't, none of my property touches Oak Street. My property is 100% surrounded by my neighbor on the right and Pat right here on the left. So, some of these concerns that are being addressed today don't relate to me. They paint a bad picture, it's similar in nature, but they don't relate to me.
So, your neighbor's the one that connects basically Adams to Oak?
Yes.
And you're the smaller piece next to that?
With the little, with the little house, yeah.
Okay. And you're storing for the summer mass dot equipment?
My own equipment. It works for mass dot.
So, is there another component to this that needs to be addressed? Is that other piece of property? It's deceiving what's, what's what there.
Yeah, absolutely, yep. I don't know what the address for that is.
Did you call the Department of Natural Resources on that property as described by Mr. Sullivan? I took a clarification, I appreciate it. I appreciate the allow, but yeah, greatly disturbed property, lots of...
Could you just pick up a little bit?
Yeah, I'll, I'll...
Yeah, Frank Murphy, 105 Oak Street. Now that we've got that clarification, that property is listed, I think it's 67 Oak Street, if I'm not mistaken, but it actually has street access on Adam Street. They have an extensive pile of fill pushed around and into wetlands, the same complaint I had earlier. I had spoken to the Department of, I think it's Natural Resources here, and they said that they would look into it, but I never heard anything back.
Is, do they actually have access on...
No, it's a gated access, there's no curb cut.
So, it crosses over somebody else's property to get to his?
Uh, no, no, actually, the, I would have to say the answer to that one is yes. It does above Adam Street, but there is a fence that opens onto Oak Street, but there's no true curb cut.
And are you next to that, maybe the house next to...
Uh, actually, we're 105, so we look out diagonally across that property.
Is the neighbor, are those neighbors here, one of them here on Oak Street next to...
Can we send a note to conservation to take a peek at?
Come again.
Do you want me to do that?
Come, come.
I don't know who's doing it for conservation now, but yes, please.
Okay.
I'd like to say one other thing. My equipment hasn't been started. It occasionally will get started, we'll check the problem, and we will put it to bed. A lot of these complaints about diesel smell, the lady from 112, this gentleman and lady from 105, is emanating from another yard, not mine. And as I'm in my own yard, I hear your equipment, but it's not my equipment. Do I, do I admit to a forklift running on occasion? Yes, but it's not an everyday occurrence. The impact that I have to this neighborhood is far less than the train that goes rattling by five times a day.
I think that's...
Or...
Wasn't that permanent?
Or businesses down the street, when they fire up the vacuum system, or whatever they're doing in there, producing whatever they're doing. I can hear it, I'm sure, a lot more neighbors can get that. I haven't, I haven't, I'll be any impact of anyone prepared to vote.
I disagree.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add one other thing, we're in the middle of voting, is I think we should send a letter to the building inspector, asking him to take a peek up at that other building property as well, because it sounds like the nuisance factor might be emanating from there as well.
I'll do that.
And certainly want to, wouldn't want to confuse the cause of what's happening up there, the noise and the smells. Because even though it's an industrial zone, there still are nuisance factors that take into consideration, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So, if the board agrees, I think we should...
Yeah, we'll do that. That's all.
All right, so I'm sending that to conservation and the...
Yeah, he didn't mention conservation, but I, we...
Well, I did.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Okay.
If I may, I know everybody wants to go home.
But Mr. Sullivan, even if he runs his fork trucks periodically, every vehicle he brings in and out of there is a big diesel, and he leaves his vehicles idling for long periods of time. And once again, video evidence to support that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we, we had a motion to continue the hearing until October 5th and that, to see what progress has been done, and then also, they'll be on the agenda for November 2nd with this site plan. Is that the motion?
Jeff?
Yes. Motion's been seconded?
Seconded.
And conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Fine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we have anything else to go before, do we? We've all said, haven't we?
Yeah, so I just wanted to know, okay, the morning one update from the... I asked the engineer to provide... Let me go and say, I think that's the lower end of the hearing.
Can we revisit the, the discussion briefly or...
We can. Basically, the fire chief wrote us a letter. Did you see the letter?
Yes.
Yeah, and so that's basically what's going on. I mean, it's, it's a building issue as far as...
Right. My understanding is that if there isn't significant progress in two years after we issued the permits, that we have the option of ganking them, of a special permit. Is that my understanding?
I don't know what the time limit is. I guess we've got...
It was two years?
It used...
And then at one point, they did the permit extension act. We can ask town council of that.
Yeah.
And the other thing, to be honest with you guys, is I don't think anybody over here ever signed a building permit application.
That seems to be one of the problems that the chief was talking about, is that they still don't have building plans. So, there might be some guy in there going to hammer around once in a while on a stud, but they're not making significant progress. And it's been almost two years.
Yeah, no, because I'm not even sure we have a jury.
No. I mean, there's nobody more probably on top of it than the chief, the fire chief.
Yeah.
He's got a real problem with that. I hope. Yeah. Because of what happened.
But I don't know the situation. I don't know if they don't have financing, I don't know what is happening.
I mean, that's...
But I don't want this to linger for five to 10 years and, you know...
Yeah, if we could find out...
I don't want them to have pocket permits.
So, town council?
And did you continue 1410 Bedford Street?
Did you have anything you wanted else to see on that one when they come back?
14, did they resolve the issue with Helm Street?
I don't think we, I don't think we can really discuss too much of it at this point since we...
There's a, there's a report from Dave, and I, I didn't read it, but I think he is rolling that out, the building inspector.
Oh, really?
And existing non-conforming use. If you want to go through that and think of anything else, shoot me an email tomorrow and we'll try to get an email out to everybody and definitely need additional information for. If you want to see stuff on plans, then get that to them and so they can get it back to us for the October meeting. I got a short list of the curb, showing the curb cuts off Route 18, and then showing the extra parking across the street, the 25 spaces, either on a separate chimney or however they want to do it, but showing that parking. So, if you want to email me tomorrow, I'd be happy to...
Thank you.
Yeah.
I had one other question, I apologize, for the zoning board agenda.
Mm-hmm.
I believe there are two applications for in-law apartments. The owners do not live in town, it seems.
Not, they can't do that, yeah.
Well, yeah, I don't know if they're moving into it or they're buying it or what, but it says here, petition of so-and-so from Milton for a special permit under in-law apartment. This one is from Braintree for a special permit for an in-law apartment.
The owner has to live there.
Okay.
Do you want me to just...
Send, send a letter to the zoning board and ask them to clarify that.
That's, that's definitely part of it.
What's that?
I assume they would recognize that.
Definitely part of it, yeah. They seem to be pretty thorough nowadays, so everybody thinks so, but it doesn't hurt.
Let me get my apologies to the board.
All right, so which?
I think both of them were, weren't they?
There's two of them.